Good evening. My name is Mayor Joseph Altamont. This is the September 3rd, 2024 meeting with the Council of Borough of Madawan, New Jersey. Pursuant to Section 5 of the Open Post Meeting Act, that it was just being unprovided by the post notification as very far pressed on January 5th, 2024 by sending notice to the scholar during our posting. A copy of said notice is not available to the public in this room file and the office of the Dara Clerk. A copy of said notice has also been sent to such members of the public that has requested such information and was returned. Mayor Cluck, Mayor Rorple, please.
Councilperson Nina Dunn, present. Councilperson Arlen Frye.
Present.
Councilperson Stephen Russell.
Present.
Councilperson Brian Lexi.
Here.
Councilperson Melanie Moore.
Present.
Councilperson Charles Ross.
Here.
Mayor Yehudah Horn.
Please stand for a second.
To the flag of the United States of America, consider Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Except for any first responders, police vehicles, cell phones, council members of the public, please meet directly. The plan may be in the next week or probably look like a system. At this time, please move to the floor for agenda items order.
Suzanne Reynolds, Al Plazin Mala. This is in regards to Resolution 240908. In recent weeks, the council's been accused of frivolously spending the taxpayers' money. With that being said, you've never been a part-time administrator for a Madawan day before, and that event has been around as long as I can remember. So I was hoping the council would please explain why this is a sudden need, as well as how much this is going to cost for a month of employment. And I'm sure we would all like to know the tasks that this part-time employee will be conducting as we do have a right to know how our money's going to be spent.
Sure, I can answer that question for you. First, as you know, as you attend many Madawan days, we continue to grow and expand the event for our community. And with that comes additional planning and additional help and resources that are needed. This money was budgeted for the Economic Business Development Commission to have somebody help along with the Chamber of Commerce. And it is $2,500,000.
So suddenly we feel the need that we have to hire somebody when the Chamber of Commerce already sponsors this. We've got an entire committee that does this. We're rep with three, like, there aren't there three people on rec as directors?
I'm sorry?
Aren't there three rec directors?
No.
They're on.
No.
And we don't have a rec committee that'll help with this along with?
We do have a rec committee. As you know, they're volunteers, so some of them are available that day, some of them may not be available that day. There's a time planning process.
I understand, but after we just spent a little over $11,000 on concerts in the park, don't we think that $2,500 for a part-time employee for a month worth of work is a frivolous expense?
It's a lot of work, but it's a lot of work that goes into it, but I appreciate your comments.
We never had this in the past, like, my question is, not one day, it was nine years. I don't understand why the others need for now, all of a sudden. By me, in the past, to not one day, we've grown, and I do agree, more work, but this year we had. I don't know, before we had, no one had help. And so this year, we helped, it's probably going to be smaller, it's more going to be here at our main street. So I was understanding to what we're missing, why it wasn't this, this year we can.
Sure, the people that actually do the work and that are planning it came to us and said, they're really, they really need the additional hands to make it a success. And that was discussed during the Economic Business Development Commission meetings, which was budgeted for, which was approved by the Finance Committee.
I can tell you, if you have a help out, but it's a lot of work.
I have, this year we did, people we had on staff, this year we had.
It wasn't easy, it was tough, and there were some things that were done.
I also have a question. Um, the Recreation Committee, um, we've, uh, we had two persons under that as part-timers. Would that be one to part-timers?
No, this person is just getting a stipend for this specific event, the work that's required and that's needed to pull off Madawan Day.
But what, wasn't there something, experimentally, we had a meeting, Recreation Committee had a meeting, where Kathy would be the?
Yes, that person's no longer with the, with us.
What, there was a, no, I didn't know, I hired people, people I thought that were going to be.
Yeah.
The needs Kathy's working.
Councilwoman, yes, um, it allowed for the reorganization of the two in office and the existing Department of Recreation. Um, it was the Director of Community Engagement, which is Kathy's work is his position, which then two part-time, which is also a part-time, Kathy's work is his position is part-time. Then it would allow for two additional part-time positions at a budget neutral, um, so no impact to the budget. Uh, one would be strictly devoted, uh, devoted to communications, and the other one would be strictly devoted to recreation events.
So did we hire those?
So we hired one, uh, we hired both, for both of those positions. One of the individuals that filled one of those positions, the recreation one, is no longer with the borough. That actually was posted at the same time of this position. Um, so we're, we have not yet identified a candidate, um, to go before the governing body to release that person. Um, so, but we have identified a successful candidate for this role.
And the person that has remained, um, under the, uh, under Kathy's work is, can that person not fulfill?
I imagine that, I imagine that they will be starting helping with Madawan Day, um, but the roles are very specific, um, and different greatly. Uh, so one is supposed to focus and was hired based upon their expertise in the area of communication, social media, and public information. Um, so I actually imagine that they would be on, I don't know, want to speak for Kathy or department. Um, I imagine not to be present in Madawan, but in a capacity to support, um, engaging with the residents and making sure that public information goes out about the success of the day, and also letting residents continue to know about the day as it's happening. This role is specifically for organizing the event leading up to and then the day of.
Oh. Do you recall, and I don't recall, what the, um, pay, pay level was, or pay?
For?
For which position?
What, which position? Were the two positions the needs Kathy's working?
It was, um, both of them are out of the rate range, uh, as per the salary ordinance. I don't remember the specific range, um, but I, I believe the recreation one was around, uh, $20 an hour and mid, I think the communications person is about, uh, mid $20 an hour.
So they, they're hourly, though, if they're not?
They're hourly part-time, and they're half the, um, certain amount of hours each week, unless, you know, undue circumstances should arise.
Okay, so they have to submit the nine hours that they?
They, they do, they, yep, and they submit, um, on a five-week basis so that before payroll can be issued, they have to have their hours approved by their supervisor.
Thank you.
I have one more question. So this is 24-20 total?
Totally.
Like, not for a month, right?
No.
Total. It's a second.
I have more.
Anyone else further to the floor?
Yes. John Serto, 29 Crescent Place. Um, just to follow up on 240908, what was the selection process for this individual?
Um, so they were posted to the Borough website, and the job description was posted to the Borough website, it's still there. It's also posted to Indeed, which is typically, um, we sometimes also look close to the legal municipalities, uh, because I felt that this wasn't necessarily a very government-specific little, I didn't want it to, we don't have to pay on Indeed, so I saved the time. So it was my decision to just put on Indeed in our website. Um, we've got actually quite a few dozen applicants. Um, they were gone through by myself, um, and also the Director of Community Engagement. The Director of Community Engagement reached out to whomever they felt was appropriate, um, had conversations with them, identified a successful candidate, and now they are before the governing body for our recommendation for hire.
Okay, thank you. I have another, um, question regarding, uh, ordinance 2420. Uh, not a question, but more of a statement. Uh, we're about to tack on another, almost a million dollars to our already staggering 30-plus million-dollar debt that we all have to pay debt service on. Um, why? Why are we going to now approve almost another million dollars for parks? Well, the reason is simple, it's politics, the parks look nice, you guys can point to them, say, yay, this is what we did. But do we really need another million, almost a million dollars in debt? Um, since I've been attending the council meetings, not one council member on either side of the aisle has said no to spending on anything. I've been coming since June 2nd, every single spending item has been approved by the Republicans and the Democrats. No one has attempted to stop any spending, and it just continues. Today, I looked at the bill, the, uh, the bills that you're going to pay. Wow, and I'm going to continue to do that, I'm going to do this entire year, but we have to rein in spending. Why are we going to put us in a, in a hole for almost another million dollars again? Would anyone like to answer that?
Thank you for your comments.
Okay. No answer.
I, I would like to just state, just as a point of clarification, um, that the ordinance that's before the governing body for consideration on second and final reading, um, it does authorize, uh, the borough to issue debt up to $809,000. But it also says that part of it, nearly over half, um, almost half, excuse me, will be covered by a grant. Um, so, well, by three grants, actually. Um, so that, I just wanted to clarify that, um, it is, I don't believe, uh, the borough's intention to issue $800,000, excuse me, um, of debt, uh, hopefully, if, if we even issue it all. Um, just, a bond ordinance does not guarantee that it will ever go to debt. It just gives us the authority to spend that money against, um, reserves, and then, um, gives us the opportunity at a later point to issue temporary debt.
All right, thank you for the explanation, but it does say $809,000, and I mean for parks? This, this is getting out of control now. Um, thank you.
I'd like to comment a little bit, if I may. Um, I spoke earlier with, uh, the Borough, uh, regarding this, this, uh, regarding the issues having been, and, uh, I think fellow partners, and, uh, Ryan was very, uh, happy to explain to me. I've said the same thing, had the same concerns as you, uh, regarding all these bonds that are put up. Um, and unless, I, I can't really convey it the way, um, Ryan had conveyed it to me, uh, because it's kind of not complicated, but there would be questions along the way. But again, it's, it's, um, it may not ever be used. If, if I have reiterated correctly what you had, because I had asked it earlier today. We, we take it from our surplus, and we may not have to pay this back, or even if we even use it to layer on down the road. I do know that it's unfortunate, but to make a town better, you sometimes have to spend money. And it's, you know, our town, in my opinion, is sort of a meat, I think, in a lot of people's opinions. Uh, and I know it's, it's kind of, I don't know how to explain it. It looks really bad with all the spending that we're doing, and I agree. Uh, but sometimes to get a town ahead, uh, to make it look better, and, and yes, unfortunately, it's, comes right before election. And that's always, you know, a plug for the, for the majority that's in front of town. Um, but, you know, it's kind of like a dam if you do, a dam if you don't. I am certainly not for all the spending. However, uh, in order to make the town better, I mean, some of the descriptions of the town when I first moved here were, were pretty accurate. And it, it's gotten better, but we've spent a lot of money, council has, I mean, at least in the last two and a half years that I've been here. But, um, the way Ryan explained to me, we, we borrow from our surplus. And we borrow when we get this, uh, bond, we, to pay it back. And of course, I asked about the interest rate at the time we borrowed, it's kind of like a home equity. You take it as you need, and I asked, well, what about the interest rate? What's the interest rate? No, no. But if Ryan cares to, he can maybe explain it better than I can?
Sure, happy to. So, yeah, um, as you alluded to, Councilwoman, so the, the bond ordinance grants, uh, the municipality the ability to, um, it authorizes the spending and it authorizes the issuance of the debt. Um, what is normal practice is, uh, the, the entity will use cash reserves, surplus, et cetera, um, to, to make those expenditures. And then, later down the road, should your need to be, um, a permanent or a temporary issuance of debt will happen. So we're, and the way that that, and essentially, so while we're sort of using reserve, we're not incrementing interest, um, there's no burden to the taxpayer in that way. We're essentially borrowing from ourselves, keeping very good record of it. Obviously, there's always a balance of the books that we're not, you know, taking from one to pay the other, which is essentially what we're doing, but, um, there's a clear delineation of all that spending so that it always gets paid back should we issue the debt. Um, I don't know if that made it more clear, I apologize if it's more confusing.
Um, not really, because we still have almost $36 million in debt in this town. And this ordinance, if it gets passed, you guys are going to spend it, you're going to use it. Um, and we're going to get tacked with almost another million dollars. That hurts every single citizen in Madawan. We have to pay for the debt service, we have to pay the interest. It's all of you too, except for the few folks that may not live here that are on the, are, are, except for Pat. We all have to pay that. And it's getting out of control, from everything that I'm seeing, the spending at this council by everyone is out of control. We don't need $11,000 to $15,000 concert, we don't need that. That's someone's taxes, that's their entire year's worth of taxes for an event. I, I, it just blows my mind, the amount of money that this town wastes. Thank you.
John, if I could add just two ways of looking at it. You can cut services, and I think you're right to citizens. If you never did any work in your house, you're asking them to tear it. That's not our mentality, that. There has to be spending on certain things. You want to keep your town and make it even better, you do have to spend money. Um, I think now municipalities to find grants and make that work is where the, the municipality will be most efficient. I can tell you, this is not the first time Madawan's fixed water. I can tell you other towns that are well off, all have nice parks. This is not something new. If you, you have a mentality that you're just going to let it, you're tearing it, and when it crumbles, you fix it. It's not the way to run a town. That's what we do.
Well, that's, that's not my mentality either, but when I see spending that is out of control, and then I look at 2022, Madawan was number four out of 53 municipalities in the highest tax rate. And then 2023, Madawan was again number four highest out of 53 municipalities. And thank God, we dropped down to number eight this year, but we're paying the highest tax, number eight out of 53 municipalities in Monmouth County. That's, we're, we're in the top 10, we can't get out of the top 10.
I'm working on it, because you said before, it does take time, what Mayor's saying. And I agree, I agree with what you're saying too. Just, you can't cut everybody, there's, there's a wide range of them.
Right, no, I totally agree with that, but.
We're working on cutting preference, and I, I, I do agree, parks need to be updated. There's a lot of others that I think we have to get, preference, and we can take care of first. So I, I agree with your saying, spending is out of control, and I've been on this committee, council for two years, I'm trying to get that knocked down. And where, where you can knock it down, we have, I think we have, at a great point, because I do, my manager's, I gotta spend, I gotta, I can't afford something to be, I have to, I have to mark something. Because that will also increase the value of the home. So there's, there's double exercise.
No, I know, but, I mean, the value of my home is concerning me because if, uh, Vice President Harris wins, then we have the 25% unrealized gain tax, and then everyone in Madawan, I know I'm paying over $200,000. I don't have $200,000 sitting in the bank, but you want my assessment to go up and up. When are we going to get out of the top 10 for tax rate in the county?
I have a question for Councilwoman Ross. Councilwoman Ross, you mentioned that some of the things are frivolous, that money's being fed up, can you elaborate on that?
Awesome, you have a budget, our budget is $16 million. I'll weigh to 2.4 for both the debt obligations. That's 15% of our budget.
Yeah, I'm curious, what would you like to cover?
Yeah, if I could, I have a product idea that I'm going to launch in the year, but I can sell it, what I can tell you, I can pay a whole debt and have a surplus of cash.
But for the immediate, you meant, you did mention that there's some frivolous, and I have my own opinions too as to what's frivolous. But I was just wondering, would you see frivolous, like, you want, uh?
I have a budget, but I'll give you answers tomorrow. I don't have a hand. I owe 2.4 million in debt for, our budget is 15% of your budget, so what you're saying, John, your taxes right there, 2.4 million of your budget is on debt obligations. I'll weigh to, he said 30 something million, what, 40 million?
Wow.
Between this and our, your telephone.
We're 2.4, we are a town of 2.4 square miles, I don't, I don't understand it. When I looked at the 2024 budget, the average salary, just simple napkin math, the average salary, I don't know if that includes benefits and everything else, is $89,900 for borough employees. That's the average salary.
It's certainly that.
Okay, well then, okay, then your budget is incorrect. I looked at the amount of employees and the amount you spend.
So, Sa, just as a point of clarification on the budget lines, that, that's essentially a budget line. It's the cumulative of all the salaries of the person that falls under that, of the people that fall under those lines. So if, if, once, one line covers ten different salaries, um, you, you would need to take the entire amount of all the employees and then divide.
Well, I, I.
Divide the salary lines, and the budget won't give you that.
I took your, you know, the budget that the council prepared and put out earlier in the year.
Again, that, that, so that number wouldn't give you that, it would just give you.
Well, gave me a number of almost 90 grand, so I guess there's more then.
No, I, I don't, perhaps you're not, perhaps I'm not explaining it correctly. The budget lines speak to the aggregate, the total number of salaries spent in each of those lines. So let's say, for example, um, for my line, I don't know what's there, let's say it's $10. There's about five different people that come out of that $10. So you would not, one would not be able to take the salary lines in the budget document and then create a correct median or average of the salaries. They would need to take the entire salaries of each individual employee, which is not published on our website, but is a public thing that can be provided. You could take the salary ordinance that's adopted every year, um, and then divide that by however many employees. I can guarantee you it's not $89,000. Most of our employees make mid-five figures. Um, and some work, for, in my opinion, very, very low wages. Our police officers start at $37,000, and they do an incredible job for our citizens. Um, I'm sure they would love to be paid $89,000.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else privileged to the floor? So noted, motion to close, privilege to the floor?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion, yes.
On the whole group business, ordinance 24-20, bond ordinance provided for various quality recreation improvements, including but not limited to, Glen Street Park improvements, Page 2, by the Borough of Madawan, for the $852,000. Therefore, in total, three grants in aggregate amount of $400,000, $474,000 expected to be received and authorized in the issuance of $89,500. Bonds and notes to the Borough, fire and pardon, of course, here, uh, have a motion to open the, uh, public session.
Motion.
Second.
Mayor Cluck, Rorple, please.
Councilperson Nina Dunn, yes. Councilperson Arlen Frye.
Yes.
Councilperson Stephen Russell.
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Lexi.
Yes.
Councilperson Melanie Moore.
Yes.
Councilperson Charles Ross.
Yes.
Motion, yes.
Thank you. If anyone would like to come up and, and speak in regards to ordinance 24-20, may do so now. So noted, motion to close the public session?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion, yes.
Ordinance 24-20, have a motion to the House.
I'll leave that motion there.
Mayor Cluck, Rorple, please.
Councilperson Nina Dunn, yes. Councilperson Arlen Frye.
Yes.
Councilperson Stephen Russell.
Yes.
Councilperson Brian Lexi.
Yes.
Councilperson Melanie Moore.
Yes.
Councilperson Charles Ross.
Yes.
Motion, yes.
Thank you. On the consistent agenda, uh, resolutions 24-09-09 through resolution 24-09-08, we're doing a mod, have a motion.
Motion. I have a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Hold on, I do have a question. Hold on, I have a question. Ryan, do you have a favor looking? Ordinance, uh, 29, 24-09, number 6, the, uh, TV cameras?
Yes.
And it's not a bill, it's a 15 grand, the bill. But if you go to his backup, it says 10,000. I don't know if it's the same one or a different one. The bill, I just saw it, I didn't sign it, actually. Bill was for 15,207,56, the resolution, look back on page, other pages on, it says 10,8494. I don't know if it type out, I'd love to take a look at it.
I, thank you, I will make sure to look at that tomorrow, and.
I didn't sign it, so, I don't know.
Right. Um, you, you want to pull that?
Uh, we can certainly pull it, yeah.
Well, this has to be paid immediately, because otherwise, if you pass one number, and it's the wrong number, we have to do an amended resolution.
Well, I can, we can, you could pass it, so the, the resolution is for the lesser amount. We can pass it and pay up to 10,000, and should there be a need for the fifth, the extra five, we can come back before the governing body.
That'll be a separate resolution, yeah.
Or is it the second?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion, yes.
Thank you. On the new business, resolution 24-09-09, some congressional services, you have a resolution, have a motion.
I'll make that motion here.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you go back? I see it here, I just.
Yeah.
I don't think we're doing it on here.
What's that?
A second one. Second one, will we, will we, will we?
Yeah.
Mike, I'm ready, we're pointing this off, I use the first amendment.
Well, this has been outstanding for some years, 2019 to, um, 2024. So we have not been collecting the garbage and recycling. They have been paying for it themselves. Over the years, they have sent their bills to the town for us to reimburse them. My position has always been, if it costs you $10 to collect your garbage, and our average per household is five, you get the five, you don't get the 10. And for the old owner had not approved it, refused to accept it, there was a change. Finally, somebody read the Municipal Services Act.
Okay.
And they, they submitted the bills, we, they both verified that they were.
Yeah, I saw it snap, as well, that's.
Yeah, the only thing is 2023, we don't know if they paid them or not, but we're not paying for 2023. So this amount is what it would have cost us, by law, we have to reimburse it.
So that number, 47,000, that's what we were paying for the town?
For that period.
Not here in town, not?
Yeah, because that is, you have a schedule, per unit, whether you're a household, or you're an apartment, or a condo, there's a certain number in that contract you have. So if they pick it up themselves and they cost them double, that, that's why we get to a 20.
Got it, I'm sure, thank you.
I'll leave that on the page.
Second. All right, you got a first and a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Public hearing, a motion, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion, yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 24-21, amendment ordinance 24-09, pending supplemental garage improvements to the Borough of Madawan, chapter 24, section 24, section 24, day six, current application procedure, have a motion to introduce.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
No.
Motion, yes.
Thank you. Resolutions 24-09, day 10, payment of bills, have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Yeah, I'm, I'm on that. Public hearing for ordinance twenty-four twenty-one, they scheduled for seven p.m. October first.
Okay, but it's the.
It's just.
I've always had this, we have to change the wording.
It's just amending that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay, yeah.
Uh, motion to adjourn? Motion.
No.
Sorry, go to the floor.
Oh, I'm, what? It's not now, it's on my phone, I can't get it.
Another motion to close, privilege to the floor?
Motion.
Wasn't even on the agenda.
Full in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion, Ken.
And, uh, motion to adjourn to executive session?
Motion.
Full in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Motion, Ken.
Uh, the, the purpose of actually the executive session, which will be deliberative in nature. We will not be taking any formal action this evening. Uh, formal action will be taken, as I am sure, and so we will not be factored in the session.
Thank you, everybody.